Please stand for prayer. Mayor Earl Bullock will be discussing a prayer.
I bow. Thank you, our Lord, for the country that we live in. Thank you for the men and women who have fought, who have died, and who continue to fight and continue to die, to give us the freedom to meet the way we do. Lord, give us wisdom. Give us discernment to make the right decisions that would benefit this town. Lord, we ask traveling mercies on those who have come. Guide them safely home. Let every day we do be in a just and fair manner and bring honor and glory to you and your sons. Amen.
Amen. Please be seated. Now, we're not going to pledge. Right back. It's not the agenda? We follow the agenda?
Men do agenda.
Oh, yeah. Yes, sir.
Thanks, sir. All right. First, I want to comment. Mr. Trudy Drawhorn, Councilman Drawhorn, is out of town, so he's not here tonight. Councilman Herring is at work and was not able to get off work to come tonight. And Councilman Taylor, who's office administrator, will be here later. He should be here, hopefully, around 8:00. He was still in the OR working. He has to work the board tonight, make sure everybody gets in their OR rooms and all that. So he'll be here as soon as he can. But in light of that, we will try to move on because we do have four members here, so we have a quorum. All right. The next item on the agenda is an executive session to discuss pending litigation. Do I have a motion to go into executive session?
I have a motion to go into executive session to discuss the pending litigation.
Do I have a second?
Yes, sir.
Okay, on my favor?
Ah.
All right. Okay. Thank you. Council went into executive session to discuss a matter of litigation. During that executive session, we conferred with our attorneys, but we had no votes were taken and no decisions were made. It was just instructional for us. Then we came out of executive session, so we're starting our meeting back at the next item, which is a review of the personnel handbook. Now, for everybody that is here that doesn't deal with this on a daily basis, Derek Cartwright, the assistant chief and interim chief at this moment, went through the personnel manual we had, compared it to the municipal association's manual, and decided what he felt we needed to make changes on, and that's what we're going to try to review tonight, is a little very few things. I want to, at this moment, thank him for all his hard work of going through this manual because I knew it was tedious. I've gone through it before with Kevin Strum on the phone with the mayor one day, and I don't think we--
And it was a day.
Yeah, it was a slog through it, so I give him kudos for getting that done. Okay? So at this point, I'll turn it over to council. Why is this thing beeping at me? Then we fold. You got another quarter? So I'm going to turn it over to council. If someone has-- I've got several items, but if anybody else has anything that they want to make changes or whatever, feel free to pipe up. So, Derek. In my opinion, pages 1 through 20 are fine. First thing I have a question on is page 21.
Is that important?
To somebody.
All right.
Page 21. It says, "Employees whose departments are closed due to inclement weather or pay for the regular straight time earnings, is scheduled to work the day of closure up to a maximum of five days per calendar year." Then there's an extra sentence there. It says, "Essential employees may be public safety, law enforcement, street department, and water department depending on circumstances."
Read that. You're on page 21.
So mine says--
About the fourth paragraph down.
Yeah. Fourth paragraph down. One little sentence that was added. I think that should either be at the top of the page or somewhere else, not right there in the middle because the paragraph before and the paragraph after look like they flow. It's like all of a sudden, you, oh, wait! I forgot to say, let's make these people essential. So that's the first thing. I think that needs to be moved or--
So where do you want it?
Put it up towards the top, I would think, if you're going to define who the essential people are.
I think it needs to be the first paragraph on your inclement weather.
Yeah.
That way it defines the rest of us to find other things.
Good with that?
Yep.
All right, let's go to page 23. All right, on page 23, you've got a statement here. It's the next last paragraph that says, "Employees may not use break time and meal periods to report late or to leave early. Break periods may not be combined with the meal period." However, earlier in the paragraphs above that, let's see. Regular full employees who work during town's normal hours of business or normal operating hours of their prospective department receive one unpaid meal break of 60 minutes, excluding emergency personnel. Breaks and meals for employees whose departments operate outside, blah, blah, blah. I don't see in here anywhere where you state that they get any other breaks other than that meal period.
Do y'all want to--
Do we need to--
Set a time period?
Are you going to give them a 15-minute break for 34 hours that they work? Or are you going to just leave it at one meal break? That's what I'm asking.
I think it really depends on the department, the department and what the workload is.
Right.
Sometimes a policeman might not get a break out. They might not get to eat it off, depending on what's going on.
Right, I understand.
And the same thing when you've got-- Water Department, say you have a sewer leak somewhere, and they're working straight through all day. Okay, so I think--
Well, I guess the reason I'm asking is that the statement says, "Break periods may not be combined with the meal period." But if you're not defining break periods at all, there's no need for that statement because you can't combine something that doesn't exist.
Take that out.
Yeah, take that. "Leave employees may not break-- use break times and meal periods to report late or to leave early," but take that--
Take the last sentence.
And then last sentence out of that, yeah.
I actually think that was in the--
Municipal's thing?
Yeah.
Which that's fine if we're going to define a break period other than a meal break, but if you're not, then it's confusing.
I think you'd have to give-- you'd have to give true definition of what that is.
Exactly. That's what I was thinking. All right. I'm trying to make hitherto my notes here.
That's a little loose.
All right, it's talking about employees who are exempt from overtime receive a salary that compensates them for all hours worked in the work week. Such employees do not receive overtime pay or compensatory time off. However, the town does grant additional paid time off to exempt employees who have worked unusual amounts of time in excess of their normal work schedule. Exempt employee may take off-- may take off during the same normal work week or pay period, or close to work week or pay period feasible. And my question here says, "New overtime for salary under cap regulation." And I believe the federal government came up with a cap that if you make less than $47,000, you have to give them overtime.
Correct.
So we need to put that in there somehow.
I think y'all got that done for last meeting?
Yeah, I think so. But I'm just saying that we need to change this paragraph to reflect that. Because it just says, "Employees who are exempt from overtime receive a salary that compensates them for hours worked in work week, do not receive overtime pay, but they would if they're-- if they make-- if they do overtime and they make less than $47,000." Correct?
No, but they wouldn't be an exempt employee. They wouldn't be an exempt employee that time.
They, well, they still are.
Am I reading that wrong?
Exempt employee, well, if you're under the cap, you're not exempt employee. That's correct.
Correct. That's nonexempt.
So we need to make sure that somehow we state in there that-- because some people, we have employees on staff that are exempt now, but because they're going to be under that cap, they won't be exempt.
Correct. So it'd be nonexempt.
Correct.
Yeah, so that paragraph wouldn't apply. That'd only apply to exempt employees.
I understand that. I'm just saying we need-- I think, I feel, I'm not her cell owner all the time, but I just feel that we should have something in there that refers to that cap.
I'd be glad to look into that. And I'd also like to look into the breaks.
Okay.
I'm making some notes if that would be--
That's fine, yeah.
I'd be glad to look into that and I can get with Derek.
Sure.
We can have that. I've got it circled.
That'll work. All right.
Are you on that? That's where the-- the police salaries in there?
Um, is it up top?
Yes, overtime, call 86 hours.
Oh, yeah, 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 yeah. Good, good, good. Yeah, okay. So we're going-- we're looking to drop the hours for officers to 84 hours from 86. You've got your sheets. What that'll do is we're not going to drop-- you want to explain that?
I'll try my best.
I think you explained it real well the other day, so--
What we want to do is drop the hours from 86 to 84. Right now, we're paying officers 86 hours straight, whether they work 84 or whether they work 86, they're getting paid 86 hours. We want to drop that to 84 hours. Take their two-week salary that they're making now and divide that by 84 hours. That would raise their hourly rate. It's not going to raise their base salary. Your unit base salary, it's not going to raise. But it'd raise their hourly rate. And it'd also allow a two-hour cushion there. But law enforcement, you don't have to pay overtime until they reach 86 hours and a 14-day work period. So that would allow that two-hour cushion. Then if an officer does work 85 hours, it kind of compensates him for coming into court or something of that nature. And it ain't costing the town a whole lot of money. Their own sick days-- I mean, on holidays, I think we got it figured it'd cost like $4 extra on a holiday for an officer.
Something like that, yeah.
You know, $2 or $4.
Yeah.
And then if y'all do that, the next page is dealing with the breakdown of annual leave.
Yeah, two weeks.
Two week and three week, and that'll be discussed in a little while. If you change it to 84, we have to check. We've got to change annual leave to 84 as well.
Yeah. I think that's where we need to go. Because we discussed that the other day in your office and it made a lot of sense. Because right now, if they work 84 hours, they get paid next amount of dollars. If they work 85 hours, they still get that same-- they basically work one hour for free. And then if they work up to 86, they work that second hour for free too. This way, we don't change their base pay if they work for standard equal hours, but if they have to put in an extra couple hours, they will get paid for those.
They work over 86.
Then they get overtime. Maybe it would be $4, so. Yeah, we're going to make that change there. All right.
Where would we insert that? After, in that section, 4.5, pay my wages?
Or is that--
Well, we got to change 4.4 as well.
Change 4.4?
Yeah, to that first paragraph that says premium of 86.
Right.
Yeah. Actually, I don't think you have to change that.
Just that number.
The number, they don't change it.
Compensatory time there? Is that what we're talking about?
Yeah.
All right. Okay. Next thing I've got is page 28. Here again, if you guys see something I missed or something you want to change, jump in. What am I going to do? No, that's fine. That wording on page 29 needs to be reworded. My mother was an English teacher, and she beat me to death with English, and it just drives me crazy, want to read something and it doesn't read.
How would you like the word? The reason for me doing that is I don't want-- I didn't want anybody to read the personnel manual and say, "Well, the police officer is getting more vacation time than a eight-hour worker." They're not getting any more vacation time. It's just explaining that it's broken down to allow them to take their full 12-hour shift off.
I'll just take that fairly word out of there.
Well, that's a split infinitive anyway, to fairly give.
Yeah, that's what-- it drives me crazy.
Well, it's fine to put it in there as long as you say to give fairly.
Give, yeah.
Fairly to give.
Fairly to give.
But the fairly had of just doesn't look--
That's a nice description.
I know you did. It's fine. That's why we're reviewing this and trying to get where it looks better.
So I take it fairly out.
All right. Where are we at? That word right there, I need to take it out. And you'll be done with that. That other stuff looks fine now, but I'll look at it. All right. The next thing is on page 32, which I think goes back to what you were talking about with the leave time and all.
Take that same word out?
No. No, no, no. "Max amount of sick leave that can be accumulated is the equivalent of 60 working days or 12 weeks." For the eight-hour employees, 480. Did you already adjust those times? Remember, we had that discussion in your office about that?
Yeah, that's the correct numbers.
The 480 and the 516 are the correct numbers?
Correct.
Okay.
Now, the 516, I believe we're going to have to adjust that because of the 84-hour shift. And 12 weeks is six periods. Six times 84. It's 504 instead of 516.
504?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I thought I was going to change. All right. Page 33 is talking about sick leave. I've got a note here about, "What about single parents of children who are sick?" Because we've got on here, "Normally, sick leave may not be used to cover expenses made necessary by illness in an employee's family. In the case of immediate family, the department head may award a day of surgery pass." But it doesn't say anything in there about if you're a single parent, it can be given a day off for sick.
So you just want to add the--
I think somewhere in there, we need to say that if a single parent's--
Does that mean it's got, "Immediate family for this purpose shall mean parent."
Right, but you've got, "In the case of immediate family, the department head may award a day of surgery pass." Doesn't say anything about them just being sick. So I think you should add something about, "For a single parent, they can be-- you know, I mean, if it's a two-parent family--
I don't think you'd do that. You'd be disrelevatory."
I've got lawyers sitting here.
I'm concerned about that too. Why don't you just put that they can award a day for surgery pass or as otherwise deemed appropriate--
By their supervisor.
By their supervisor.
Okay, there's-- I just feel like without having something in there, we would discriminate against single-family parents because you're not--
But if you're single, then you discriminate against--
Right, I understand that. That's fine. Hey, if I knew everything, I'd have wrote this all myself and been done with it. Boom! That's why I brought everybody in here so we can talk about it. All right, so we've got that fixed. Next thing is jump to page 36. Oh, I think you and I already discussed this.
Yeah, explaining the essential employees.
No, the inclement weather thing.
Oh, yeah. And I don't know if I explained it to you that day, but--
I think you did.
I may have. One reason was because the inclement weather is in there twice. One is when the town hall is open or closed, and the other one is under leave. It allows for an employee to use some of their annual leave should an emergency come up or whatever, inclement weather, you know, snow in the dirt, whatever occasion they be. It allows them to use up to five days of their annual leave to stay home with their kids or whatnot whenever the school is closed due to the weather. Because some may have to travel from Little Rock to wherever else to get here. But that's what was in there twice. And I just added that other word.
Okay, that's cool. Yeah, I thought we talked about that earlier. All right. Can you tell me why, on page 37, "Physical disability and personal leave"
Yep.
Applies to employees employed less than 12 months.
I can refer you to Kevin Strum. And that's why it's highlighted.
That's cool.
Because that whole entire thing comes from him.
All of that?
Yeah. He said, um--
I knew that, yeah.
He said, "With the FMLA, we are a qualified employer, but we don't have any qualified employees." Because in the, um-- and I don't know-- did you make the demo copy of that? Mayor Rebecca talked to him on the phone and--
Back sheet what? Number what?
Number 28. Back sheet 28.
I think I got that.
Mr. Curran says, "Basically, double talk. We did need a policy, but we didn't need it to state FMLA."
Well, my understanding is FMLA is the-- you have to have 50 employees or more?
Well, we're a public agency, so we would be covered there. So we're a covered employer. However, down under eligible employees, it's got the word "and," and them two there can probably read this a little better than I can. But it's got, "And works at a location where the employer has at least 50 employees within 75 miles." And Kevin said that's what knocks us out. We don't have any covered employees or eligible employees. So that wording that's in there is actually in that model policy from the municipal association. He advised me what to go in and take out and--
Okay.
And "and."
Cool, that's on the next. I'm changing that word right here.
What is that word? Did you read it?
"At."
Okay.
Only "at" to discretion. All right, next thing I've got looks like it's page 41. All right, under discipline. Let's see. Last paragraph says, "Employees must sign counseling memorandum, policy statements, performance evaluations, and other similar documents." And I want to see what y'all think about adding in there the list of things that they have to sign is record of disciplinary action. Should that include, the employee must sign that as well. It's not specifically mentioned there. That's why I'm asking, should that be mentioned? Or do you think other similar documents will cover it? Told you I nitpicked it.
I'm glad you did.
My thing is a couple dollars when Kevin's going through it.
Yeah.
What do you have to think?
The written should be enough, right? Written document.
Okay.
My thing is, now, employee has a right. If they're given a disciplinary right, they have the right to refuse to sign it. That's their prerogative. They don't have to sign it.
The municipal association's policy--
Yeah, present, way we're set up.
No, it's just a model policy from the--
Yeah, what's it say?
And it's got, "They must sign it." If an employer refuses to sign the document here, you're relieved of duty without paying to the date the document is signed. If the document has not been signed and returned by the end of the employee's next scheduled work date, the city will consider the employee to have resigned. And it's from their--
Straight.
The municipal association.
Okay.
Long as we get it.
So are we going to assume that just comes under similar documents? Or we want to-- Okay, that's fine.
I think something about it should cover all of it.
No, I was thinking so. I'm not sure. All right, next thing's on page 46. Can I talk to you for just a second? I've got a quick question I need to ask.
Sure.
Before I bring this up. Just read that statement and tell me if I need to bring it up. If you hear me writing.
My suggestion would be to raise that issue with Mr. Strum.
Okay, that's what I do.
Yeah.
All right, thank you.
Assistant response.
Because I understand he's going to be reviewing this again. Yeah. Yeah, if you want to see what I just asked. All right, the next thing is on page 47. It says in here, in that first paragraph, about halfway here, it says, "Town must comply with a federal Department of Transportation Motor Care Safety Regulation 49 CFR Part 382." And then further down, it says, "To comply with Drug-Free Workplace Act." Should we, do you think we should have in an appendix those particular regulations available in the appendix for our employees to see?
Yes, I think so.
And Kevin can say whether he likes that or not too, but I just feel like I cannot stand reading something that points to 20 other things and you don't have them there to look at and you've got to go hunt it down.
You don't have any reference.
Right. On page 48, we ain't got a whole lot more to do here. Under Section 95, applicant alcohol and drug testing. It says, "Applicants determined to be final candidate of employment are to have drug and alcohol screening alcohol screening following a conditional offer of employment. Applicants for temporary positions requiring a commercial driver's license or designated as a safety-sensitive USDOT guidelines or town policy laws be required to submit to drug and alcohol screening following a conditional offer of employment. Candidates for all temporary positions are to have a drug and alcohol screening." That wording seems redundant to me. Because you're saying that applicants for temporary positions requiring a commercial driver's license, then further you just say, um, candidates for all temporary positions are, have to have the same drug screening. It's like saying, all the women in here need to have drug screening, then another statement says all the men here have to have drug screening, and then the last one says all people have to have drug screening.
Did you want to lay down the last one off?
No, actually, I would probably take the one about the commercial driver's license. Because if you couldn't screen all temporary employees with drug and alcohol, you should cover all of it.
That covers all of it. There's usually, in a handbook, in the book, when anything else, everyone that is employed by that company or town, wherever, has to have alcohol, drug screening. It don't matter if you have a driver's license or not. That takes care of the driver's license, everything.
Right, that's what I'm saying. That's what the one, the one line says, but the other line says specifically a commercial driver's license. I don't think we need that in there.
But you're taking that whole sentence out.
I took the whole one out.
And then just that, that last sentence out.
Yeah, and if you want to put a note to have Kevin look at that and see what he thinks, if he thinks we should leave it in there, that's fine, we can leave it in there. But it just seems like it's redundant wording to me.
Trying to see if I got that down. Small pause.
All right, page forty-nine, same kind of thing. Section nine-six, testing types. All employees are subject to reasonable suspicion and post-accident drug and alcohol testing. Are not employee, all employees subject to random tests? That's what I thought. Now, the next paragraph says, "All employees who are required by their jobs to possess a commercial driver's license or employees that possess a commercial driver's license are subject to reasonable suspicion, post-accident, and random drug test, drug and alcohol testing in accordance with DOT safety regulations. All employees who hold a safety-sensitive position are subject to post-accident, reasonable suspicion, and random, random drug and alcohol testing."
This is why I didn't...
Absolutely.
This is the model policy reading.
Okay, thank you. This one's getting influenced. Reasonable suspicion, their employees. Really? Hmm. Okay, cool. That's what we asked. Quote, it says municipalities can order employees to submit to drug test screens when the municipality has reasonable suspicion of illegal drug use, but generally, that is a vague word, but generally may not randomly test all employees.
And that's the model policy from the...
That's a new one on me.
Municipal association.
Okay, well, we will leave that alone then. All right, page fifty-two, notes to employers, state, and federal grantor contact agencies and law enforcement authorities. I have picked up that first paragraph that says, "As required by the state and federal drug fee, uh, drug-free workplace acts." Here again, question is, if that's, I think that may be the same act I mentioned earlier, but it needs to be in the...
Appendix.
Yeah. If we're gonna cite it, we need, I think we need to have it. Also, nine-twelve, smoking tobacco, vapor, et cetera. In order to protect the health of employees and citizens, the use of tobacco products is prohibited, and all this includes any tobacco product, electronic or vapor, cigarettes, cigars, or anything that emits any form of smoke or vapor. Should that not also include chewed products? Chewed tobacco or, um, what do y'all think?
Yeah.
I mean, I'm just saying since you, since we're specifically saying cigarette, cigars, vapor and stuff, we need to, I think, add either snuff or chewing tobacco, whatever they call that stuff these days. Because I have a certain employee that used to do that. Can you deal with that?
So you want me?
Just add that to the list.
Just chewing tobaccos?
Chewin' type pro, type tobaccos or something like that.
Just includes any tobacco product.
I mean, you have it, you have, it includes any tobacco product, but then you go in and list electronic or vapor, cigarettes, cigars, or anything that emits any form of smoke or vapor. But chewing tobacco does not do that.
Right.
I know, I'm nitpicking, I'm sorry.
Go get it worked.
My mind's on what about nicotine gum, what?
So nicotine gum, I don't...
It's not a tobacco product.
That, that's not a tobacco product. I mean, it don't have nicotine in it, but it's, it's usually used to, in lieu of, so... It usually means you're on the right path, hopefully. All right, page fifty-three. Grieves procedure, county municipal employees grievance procedure act. That should be in the appendix also, I think, if you're gonna state it. Any questions so far? Comments?
Good.
Okay, well, that's what I said, we needed to get through, get it over with so we could get it submitted. Grievance committee.
What page, Joe?
Page fifty-six. Town administrator appoints a committee composed of three to nine employees. Is that what they got there?
Yes.
I was thinking we did like four to six or something.
Yeah, because that's... I just left their whole entire grievance thing in here.
Well, if it's in there...
They might have to change wording. I've got, I said stadium, but town or...
Yeah, I got that, that's fine. Okay, well, I'll, I'll leave that alone if that's in there, that's fine. How about, um, it says, "Members employed in the same department as a grieving employee and members having formed an opinion..."
I'm actually thinking that Brian is saying that you can choose how many people you want, if I'm reading it right. This is what they have in their...
Yeah, three to nine, three to nine, so yeah, that's probably...
I mean, if you want to limit it to...
No, 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 that's fine. I just, um, I was thinking you had to have at least four, was all I was thinking, so it'd be... But I, you know, you, because you've got the head of it and you've got the others, but that's fine. If they put that, well, it's fine. Um, I put a note here, "Members employed in the same department as grieving employee and members having formed an opinion on the issues prior to the hearing may not participate in that employee's hearing." And I, I'm thinking we should put, "Unless no other employees are available." Leaving it open that if we have to, for some reason, we could put one of those type employees in there. We have to. I mean, it's a small town. The chances of finding someone who hasn't heard about what was going on and not already having up, come up with an opinion on it is gonna be probably slim to none. That's just my opinion.
So now, you want to change the wording too?
Just add...
Unless no other is available.
Yeah. Leaving it open that if we have to, for some reason, we could put one of those type employees in there. We have to. I mean, it's a small town. The chances of finding someone who hasn't heard about what was going on and not already having up, come up with an opinion on it is gonna be probably slim to none. That's just my opinion.
So now, you want to change the wording too?
Just add...
Unless no other is available.
Yeah. This is something I want you to ask Kevin Stern about. Let me turn it in.
I would think so, but it rests in the town administrator. He told me to make sure that the grievance ends at the town administrator.
So you're saying we need to put that in there or not?
No, I would think not, but I'll, I'll still mention it.
Ask it, ask him to be sure. All right. Anybody, I'm done with mine. So anybody else got anything they need to change or want to ask about?
The only thing I will mention is you, if you notice, I took the forms out of the book while you're reading it and placed them all at the back of the book, all the...
That's good.
I think it's the best place, yeah.
And if you also look at those forms, they've been tweaked a little bit.
They've been cleaned up a lot too.
Yeah.
Yeah.
A lot better.
I'd, I'd be afraid they asked that many hours yesterday.
Um...
You don't want to...
I, I...
That's why I made the comment I did about...
I would like to say though, but I think you've done an excellent job.
You do not.
And, uh, I know I'm to blame for probably the fact that you were doing so, but you did an excellent job.
Yeah, I think you were, yeah.
I'm the one that's to blame.
When anyone wants to mention, yeah.
You're the one that made them up.
Yep.
I thought so.
But I think you did an excellent job, so...
All right, so are there any other questions about the personnel manual?
Good job.
All right, here now, I move on to...
Question.
Okay, question?
Maybe we adopt this with corrections. We can do it tonight, Kevin.
Well, Derek's gonna have it, um, sent to Kevin Stern for review. If he doesn't find anything, uh...
There's nothing.
Illegal or whatever about it, then, then we will bring it up for a vote.
So hopefully by next council meeting, regular meeting.
Hopefully, yeah.
We should have something to work with.
When you'll bring it up, when you bring it up for a vote, it does have to be listed on this agenda, this, this per, Kevin, again, um, you're voting to take away the, eliminate the entire old personnel manual, and then you're voting to adopt this personnel policy. In other words, you're going with all of the other policies.
Right.
And, um, I talked to, I think Brian and Jared about it, but we'll go through and separate, some of the stuff in our old manual needs to be in a police department manual. It needs to be in a water, street manual. It don't need to be for all employees to read. Um, it just needs to be whoever it's dealing with, and that was also another suggestion.
Whoever it actually applies.
Yes, yeah, and then obviously have your department head manuals, you know, for what they're to do.
Right.
Okay. The next thing on the agenda is the recodification of the ordinances.
Yeah. How far along are we? Anybody got a clue?
We got the re, we got it back from them, and each one of you has been given a copy at a previous council meeting, and we were supposed to review it and decide what we think about the changes and all.
It's much better than you said. It's good man, I don't like it.
Oh, okay, well, I'll see if I get any one. I've gone through it, and I've highlighted the things. As you're going through it, they give you all the ordinances and order.
Right.
At the bottom of the page, they tell you things that they think you might want to change or whatever, based on there. Like this first one says, "All ordinance passed subsequent to this code of ordinances which amend, repeal, or in any way affect this code of ordinance may be numbered in accordance with the numbering system of this code imprinted for inclusion herein or in the case of repealed chapters, sections, subsections, or any part thereof by subsequent ordinances. The repealed portions may be excluded from the code by omission from reprinted pages affected thereby, and the subsequent ordinances that number and printed or omitted in the case of repeal shall be prima facie evidence of the subsequent ordinances until the time at this code of ordinances and subsequent ordinances numbered or omitted or readopted as new code ordinances." Got it all right?
Got it.
Good. Um, then it says amendments to any provisions of this code may be made by amending such provisions by specific reference to the section number of this code in a foreign language, and they give you the language to use. Am I the only one with a copy of this?
I got a copy.
Oh, good for you, good for you, all right, excellent. Um, I'm trying to figure, page five of eight. They've got down there, section, certain ordinances, rights, rates, franchise, taxes, child. Um, they're showing you all that stuff, granting any right or franchise, establishing any rates thereof, dedicating, um, all that looks pretty good. And then it gets down here, it says, "Certain norms is not affected," very bottom of that page, under chapter one oh eight, town seal. It says, "This proposed section, comic placing codes, is to make explicit that certain ordinances which are not codified nonetheless remain valid and are not to be considered implicitly repealed when the new code is adopted. Of course, the list of specified types of ordinances may change based on decisions made during this project." So they're trying to say, is this, right here, this section here are things that aren't necessarily gonna be dropped, but they're not quoted in a section codified, it's just being... Now, they changed former government adopted, they changed, they've taken the council...
Joe?
I'm on page one of twenty-seven. Next section. Council former government is established and adopted by the town for certain state law, which strikes out the mayor, council, former government, yada, yada, yada. They've added, uh, state reference in here, council required to meet at least once a month to determine rules or procedures. Southside Code nineteen seventy-six, five dash seven dash two fifty, acts of council required to be done by ordinance, procedures therefore. I can read all those numbers right in. Please note that when they're leaving in here, it says, "All legislative and administrative powers of town in the determination of all matters of policy shall be vested in the town council, um, with each member, including the mayor, having one vote. Mayor pro temp, council shall have the first meeting of the new constituted council after any general election from municipal council. Elect one of its members as mayor pro temp for a term of two years, not exceed two years." That's left in there because by state law, even though we're a council former government and the power does not reside with the mayor, you still are supposed to have a mayor pro temp.
Right.
So that's why that was left in there. Um, we added, uh, section two oh eight oh sixty, which is on page two of twenty-seven. Each year at the last council, last regular council meeting of the year, the council will vote to determine which member of council serves administrative of the town. That person will answer daily questions, employees handle the hiring, discipline and firing of employees with the approval of council. Administrator will also be able to enter in and sign contracts and grants on behalf of the camp town with approval of council and authorized purchases by department heads that are under the fifteen-hundred-dollar limit. The administrator will point in writing a designate to fill in when they are not available. Okay.
Section.
Uh, two twelve thirty, I was trying to figure out here, page three of twenty-seven. Majority of the council members shall constitute a quorum for the conduct of business at any meeting. Mayor or mayor pro temp shall preside, except that in presence, absence of both, the member shall select, uh, presided member. And I've got a note at the bottom, presided voted on at the same time as administrator. As we vote on that at the same time we vote on administrator, we'll vote on who's gonna be presided for that year. So that'll have to be changed, I'll make a note. Put that on there. Two twelve oh seventy, agenda, that changed from our original book because of the FOIA Act caused us to have to change that. Um, town attorney to attend. And here's a question, it says, "Town attorney shall attend all meetings of council unless excused by council. He shall act as parliamentarian, propose ordinances and resolutions, view all ordinance and resolutions and documents presented to council, blah, blah, blah." And a question I had at the bottom was, "Does the town attorney act as a parliamentarian?" Which the answer is no. So I'd say we need to strike that, they act as parliamentarian. Now, the next question is, "They propose ordinance and resolutions." I think they need to review all ordinance and resolutions before they're done, but I don't think they're necessarily needed to present them, unless you know of something that I'm wrong on. Okay, so we'll take that off. So they don't have to propose ordinance and resolutions. Under two twelve one ten, order of meetings. You see the list they have there, A through I? There note at the bottom says, "Well, there must be an order, agenda, there's no requirement that it be codified, and this only be revised by ordinance, retain or remove this section." I say remove it. Because if we codify it and say, "You have to do this, you have to do that, you have to do that," that's what we're gonna have to do.
Then you've got to stick to it.
Yeah, we're gonna have to... You got that, Joe, and that makes sense to you?
Yeah, I can move it too.
Now, all right, here. Top, top of page five of twenty-seven.
Give me a number.
There is no number, that's the whole point. It's right above chapter two point one six, ordinances and resolutions. It's right above chapter 2.16, ordinances and resolutions.
2.16.
Okay. That is the ordinance that was presented, and we voted on and all that says, "Each year at the last council meeting of the year, the council will vote to determine which member of council will serve, serve as presided for council meetings." And I've got, see, 21230, so that needs to be moved up to 21230, in my opinion. Because 21230, two pages back, was the one talking about the mayor or mayor pro temp shall preside. Okay. So, I'm saying that should go back up to 21230. 216030, ordinances codification. All ordinances relating to administration, health, safety, vehicle, streets, blah, blah, blah. They struck relating to, all the way down to, or portions of, ordinances. They struck that out, and they said revise this section to preserve greater flexibility in determining what ordinances are to be codified. Okay, so they're saying don't limit yourself by listing out those particular things to be codified. So, I agree with that. Again, these are suggestions that they've made, we don't have to follow them, but most of them that I've seen look like they're legitimate. All right. Page eight of 27, 2 dot, 2 oh dot oh one oh. I know this is exciting, but sometimes we just have to sit here and do work like this and get things straight, so.
2 dot, 2 oh.
2 oh dot oh one oh, emergency powers of. And Janet, you may have to correct me on this. It says, "Emergency powers of mayor." And council former government, does the mayor, would the mayor have the emergency powers, or would that go follow to the administrator? Randy, you can answer that if you feel up against it.
Do you think you get this out? I could probably get a first statute for that, I don't have that on my head.
I'll have to look into it. Look into it, okay. Look into it, okay. That's fine. All right. Page nine of 27, bottom of the page, 2 dot 24 dot oh eighty, results of elections. They've highlighted, um, some words there, I'm assuming those are the words that they changed it to be. The managers of municipal elections shall officially certify the results of election to the municipal election commission. And then the municipal election commission shall officially declare the results of the election within seventy hours. Does that look, worded differently to you, or they've highlighted that for some reason? What do you think, Earl?
Well. The trouble is me, is the last part of it.
Which part is that?
Look at the last sentence there, "Such declarations shall be made to the mayor and council who shall officially notify account of such the results. That's in conflict with the election handbook, because the results published at that point in time to the public."
Okay. Yeah, but it's, it's, all right, you're saying that the, they'll figure it out, and then they'll, they'll publish it to the.
And publish it.
To the public, right. But this is saying that we are to contact them directly.
Yeah.
On top of that. No need to do that.
My, my way of thinking.
So, we'll take such declaration shall make the mayor and council, take that out?
I, I think so.
Okay. Does the handbook you're talking about also talk about 224100, municipal election commission? It says, "All elections should be held on the venue, this chapter shall be conducted by election committees, and composed of three electors who shall be residents of municipality and who shall be appointed by municipal." Isn't that covered under that other document as well?
Yes, it's covered under the, yeah, it is. I'm pretty sure it is, anyway, I'd have to look back, but I think so.
Do we still have an election commission?
I suppose they have, yeah. You have to have a municipal election.
You got that booklet? I don't have a copy of it. So, I know you were on the election thing for a while there.
Yeah, mine does, I, I'm certain, uh, David Earl would have to, probably the latest.
Under 2 dash 24 dash 110, you'll notice that A is still there, but B they've taken out. They struck out because of nominees in a party primary or a party convention. And nominees by petition shall be certified in municipal election commission within the time specified herein. And when so certified, the commission shall place the names of such employees on the ballots. Um, they struck all that out, they're saying amended during 1991 or whatever.
Ninety two.
I understand the part about in a party primary, because we don't have any party primaries or party conventions for the town. But it says, "And nominees by petition."
That's what we use.
Yeah, so that would apply, I would think.
That would be applicable, yeah. I think you could strike out party primary, party convention.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking.
Because that nominee is by petition.
Yeah. All right, moving right along. Whenever any officer, all right, this is, hang on, I know, I know. Uh, 228050 on page 12, right of entry. Whenever any officer or employee of the town is required or authorized by statute for provisions of this code or any ordinance or resolution by rules and regulations or orders issued thereunder in order to carry out his duties thereunder to enter any premises or vehicle, such officer or employee shall have the right to enter any such premises or vehicle at any reasonable time pursuant of such duties. Should that say something about subject to federal and state law?
I think you might better. On the right entry, you've got to have a.
Yeah, I mean, what they're talking about here, um, based on the.
Well, it, it, it's saying that you were talking about building inspector.
Right, yeah.
Would have the right.
Well, enforcement of ordinances or laws, which would include building inspectors as well, which we don't.
Exactly.
We don't even have one here in town, so.
No.
But that does include law officers as well.
Law, law officers won't even be, need to be mentioned in that, because it comes under code laws.
Yeah. So, the question is, is, do we want to add subject to federal and state laws?
If you put that under there, I think you cover it.
Okay.
Federal and state statutes. That sound about right?
Yeah, I think that's what he's saying. Yes.
Go to 228060.
2.
28060.
Resting or resisting or interfering with municipal officer or employee.
Yeah. I think it needs to be added in that, if you've got a building inspector, that would come under that, or codes enforcement officer. Because right now, all it addresses is the police department, fire department, or, well, I guess it does too, any other municipal officer or employee in the district, never mind, that covers it.
That is good. All right.
232.
Yeah, this is 2.32, clerk and treasurer. Election term, at the time of point for the regular election of officer of the town, shall be elected by the council, and officer to be known as the clerk, the treasurer of the town, who shall hold office for a one-year term or until his or her successor is duly elected and qualified unless removed from office by the council. Um, do we want to leave that as a one-year term, or do we want to change that?
I have mixed emotions about that. You're doing it every year, which in essence, what it tells Rebecca is that you have a job from January to December, and after that, you might not. That's really what it says. But this being an employment at Will State is irrelevant, so. Because in the same thing, it addresses the fact unless you're removed from office by the council, so it's redundant in what it's saying.
Right.
I think you just leave it at the one year.
Just leave it.
That's what I think.
All right. So, I asked, okay. Um, the next one, bond. Before entering upon the duties of his or her office, clerk and treasurer shall enter into bond in such, such sum as may be required, and with such surety company as shall be approved by the council for the faithful performance of his duty. And I've got a note here, "Unless covered by other insurance that is acceptable to council."
Municipal insurance is the one who actually.
I guess what it's trying to say is, do we need to have them be bonded, or as long as they're covered by insurance?
I don't think you do.
I don't either, because she doesn't handle, not handle the money.
No, I mean.
All right, so, do we want to just strike that? Do we need to do something to take that ordinance out?
Oh, well, I think you could take it out, because they're covered automatically, they're covered. Once they're appointed, they're covered. Doesn't make any difference.
So, we need to see about doing a repeal of the ordinance?
Yeah, I think we need to repeal that.
Okay.
Because they are covered under municipal, under the policy that we have.
Right.
They're covered by the bond.
Okay. All right. Um. 2 dash 32 dash oh 30, this is the next one, duties. Clerk and treasurer shall collect all claims and accounts that may be due and payable to the town, receive all money belonging to the town, issue all licenses and badges for which provisions may be made, pay all bills, which is incorrect, because she does not pay all the bills, voted by town and approved by council. Um, we've set it up where the administrator and or the assistant approves bills to be paid.
Right.
Through that system, so we need to, I think we need to reword that.
Right.
Um, I'll talk with Janet about getting that reworded the way we need to.
Well, they don't even issue all the licenses and stuff behind that. That's been a while, a lot of times. So, yeah, we need to, need to reword the whole thing.
You have to amend, I've been reading notes here, trying to figure out, it's been a while since I looked at this. Yeah.
I'm going to the bathroom.
Okay, go ahead. You didn't even figure out what I'm doing here. So, Ed, like Mr. Fortman, he heard that. It's from the current cases. Some of the stuff they won't be clear on what they're trying to do. I'm just wondering if you're saying here that there's state law references, do we, do we need to reference our services? See, because right here is a state law reference. That answers your question. All right. Well, we're going to keep moving on here. Um, 240050, temporary absence of vacant city office of municipal judge. And they've got, they striked out mayor and put the council, in event of temporary absence, sickness, or disability of the judge, council shall designate a practicing attorney or some other person who has received training or experience of municipal courts to take over the job, which is a correction they made. Then I've got on here, jury commissioners and duties, 240090. Members of the council shall serve and act as jury commissioners for the municipal court. Within the first day, thirty days of each year, the jury commissioner shall prepare a jury box, which shall contain two compartments designated as A and B respectively. And I've got a note here that we ought to just delete that, repeal that ordinance. They changed where they said, we used to have general sessions of Dillon County, they changed that to court of common pleas. And that's done to reflect the proper appellate court, per Statute of Common Code. Um, 244020 on page 19, to be appointed by the mayor and, and they struck that out and put administrator, subject to approval by the council, that's for creation of certain officers. Building inspector, gas inspector, plumbing inspector, housing inspector, electrical inspector, fire inspector, if we want to create those officers. Administrator can do that, subject to approval. We may never do that, but. Um, it says, uh, bottom of the page, they've got a suggestion, it says, "We propose shifting these provisions to a buildings chapter, which would also include provisions from Title 15." Um, I mean, that is, that says building departments, that seems to me like it's in the right place as far as I'm concerned, so I say no to that. Just leave that where it's at. 2.4 point 100 on page 20.
2 point.
2.48 point 10, 010. Town administrators subject approval by the town council shall appoint a qualified person to serve as fire chief within town, service until successor is appointed, the town administrator subject approval by the council. We also appoint assistant fire chief and so forth. Now, my question is this, we, go ahead.
We'll leave it in case we do.
Okay, all right, that's what I wanted to know.
Better to have it not.
That's fine, I got you.
Either you do or you not have.
The county's doing fire right now for that.
Right.
Okay. I don't worry. All right, their next suggestion is 2.48 point oh 50, procedure for fire department, page 21. There's A and B, there's ten things under A, and there's four things under B. And they've got procedure for fire department, this section is more in the nature of employee guidelines and operational policy instead of codified law, and I wonder if we want to retain it or omit from the new code. Huh?
I would admit it.
You'd omit it? What do you think, Earl?
If you're going to leave it in there to address the issue of if the town took up another fire department.
Well, but they're saying that it should be in the employee guidelines for the fire department.
I don't think so. I don't think they just leave it.
You don't think we need to have it?
I don't think so.
Yes, I agree with him. All right, that's what I thought. Do we need to put anything in our code stating that the county runs the fire department right now? If we, I think about that, we ought to go about doing that.
We still got it in there to have the...
We have duties of firemen, chief, and all that, so it's still there.
Yeah, we could go by cover if needed.
Please note that two point four eight point oh seventy, false alarms have been marked out. The reason for that is, is, uh, state law sixteen seventeen five seven addresses the topic of interference with fire and police alarm boxes and giving false alarms. So they say to omit, omit that. And I'm assuming we're going to have to do a resolution or ordinance to repeal these, do a repeal thing, for anything we're going to omit? We can't just omit it from the book, we have to actually repeal it, right?
Yeah, it'll need to be done by ordinance.
Look, can't we do all of it at one time?
Sure.
Good. All right, police department. Two dot fifty-two dot oh one oh. B, it says, the personnel of the police department shall be designated by the town administrator, subject to approval by the town council at the first meeting of the council after inauguration, or at such other times as may be deemed expedient. I'm not the most brilliant person, but I'm like, I think the police chief is supposed to designate, wouldn't that be similar to hiring?
Yeah. Well, what it is here, you're actually giving them a boot of competence.
Is that what it is?
That's what I think.
There is no explanation for that.
Yeah.
They just changed it because they've got it elected by the town council, as was struck out, and now it's designated by the town administrator, subject to approval by the council. I'm just not worried, I'm just not sure about the word designated.
I don't know what that means either.
I know when the sheriff takes office, every year, you've obviously got to square in and stuff like that, but I've never seen a municipal police department. We usually, the police chief will say, I've hired someone, bring them in, introduce them, so the council knows who they are. This was, we used to do, I don't, I don't think we've done it the last couple ones, but I mean, usually that would happen, council meeting, the first council meeting, we'd have firemen or policemen would come in and be introduced, so we knew who they were, but we never really voted on them. Because that, that's, that's under employment, that would be the, the police chief's job, to hire her employees.
Why don't you just delete that?
Or just remove that?
Completely.
All right, then we're repealing that.
That goes back to questioning the council board, who has the authority to hire firemen? Because if you're talking about...
Yeah, but even under mayor form, the mayor could designate, department heads to hire people that would be working with them.
Yeah, yeah.
All right, um, two fifty-two oh two oh salaries. Salaries of the police to be established and fixed as the council may determine, and to be paid semi-monthly by, they marked semi-monthly out, to be paid by the clerk and treasurer in frequency established by the council. Does that work for y'all?
Yeah.
All right. This next one comes up under... Suspension or removal, the chief of police, or any policeman of the police force may be suspended or removed by the town administrator for cause. Which suspension or removal shall be forthwith reported to the council for their approval or rejection. And all that's doing is changing out the word town administrator for the mayor, basically, because that's the way it was before. See a problem with that, Janet?
No, you have to leave that, because it is at this time.
All right, and then, mayor may appoint special, that, see, that needs to be changed. Town administrator, upon any emergency or apprehension of mob, tumult, or riot, may appoint as many special policemen as necessary to be paid, such as may be agreed upon. They marked out mayor and put town administrator, is that okay? Because that goes back to that emergency powers question we had. Or we said we'd have to check the statute?
I think that's got to be checked with that, with the emergency powers.
Check, check the statute on that, okay. So that's two fifty-two fifty, we're going to have to check the statute on that. All right, section two fifty-two one hundred, personal appearance. Two fifty-two one ten, drinking of intoxicants, intoxicants prohibited on duty. Two fifty-two one twenty, routine duty, and two fifty-two one thirty, personal conduct. They're saying that these, all these particular ordinances, these sections are more in the nature of personnel policies than codified provisions. They say we should delete, particularly if already addressed in employee handbook or guidelines. Where did Derek go? Do we cover, we cover the, I know we cover the intoxicants on duty. Do we discuss personal appearances in there, under the police department at all?
Uh, no.
What about routine duty?
Yeah, routine duty. I don't think we discussed it, I think we got returned to.
The one now?
I don't think we discussed it, I think, like, after the test and whatever, they're returned to duty.
Okay. So the question is, is do we want to take their, their, uh, their advice and put these in our personnel manual, instead of having them codified in law? Okay, so, I'm going to suggest that we do a repeal on two fifty-two one hundred through two fifty-two one thirty, and address that in the personnel manual. Need to make a copy of this, see if it'll... Yeah, we're going to the pink paper, and it's gone. Page one of nine, title three, revenue and finance. You'll, you'll see that they added this state reference up there. Title three, revenue and finance. Top of the page is one of nine. It's chapter three, point something.
Good. Revenue and finance provisions.
There you go. They've added a big section, what is that, the old one?
That's the old one.
All right, they've added this whole big section about state law and stuff at the top. And then, under budget required, they changed it to, the administrator, finance committee, and clerk, and the accountant shall prepare and maintain an annual budget to provide for sufficient revenue to meet estimated expenses for each year. So just change that from administrator, mayor to administrator. They've got a section here, this is, if you look at three oh four oh sixty.
Three oh four oh sixty?
Yeah. I wonder if you want notes to hear. All right, they've got a section here that they want, that they're suggesting we add. And it says, a section, administrative fee for debt collection. A, town of Lata hereby imposes an administrative fee in the amount of fifteen dollars to defray internal costs of collecting delinquent debts that are sought to be collected pursuant to the provision of the Setback Debt Collection Act, blah, blah, blah. This fee is hereby declared to be a, a collection cost that arises by operation of law and shall be added to delinquent debt and recovered from the debtor. B, town of Lata hereby declares that the administrative fee charged by the municipal association of South Carolina is also a collection cost to the town, which should be added to the delinquent debt and recovered from the debtor. Okay? Sound good to y'all? That's what they're suggesting, we add that section in. All right, that's page for tonight. The other half.
Oh, good.
Next. I hate to scare you. All right, under three, uh, dash one two, chapter three dash one two, purchasing. They added a state law reference there, saying municipalities required to adopt reasonable regulations. Three dash twelve dash one ten, purchases less than fifteen hundred dollars, instead of fifty dollars. I think we already changed that. Department head. Then they've got the department head, subject to authorization by the administrator, may purchase supplies, missing items, costs less than fifteen hundred, which funds are provided in the budget. Uh, what, supplies and items make sense to one or more than one, but must not exceed fifteen hundred, uh, blah, blah, blah. So that's, I think we'd already changed that ourselves, but it just had to be actually corrected. And then, three dash twelve dash oh twenty. Bet you they changed where the, instead of the mayor shall approve all purchases, the administrator shall approve all purchases, orders for supplies, uniforms, blah, 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 for five hundred dollars. Purchases less than fifteen hundred dollars may... We're letting the purcha-, the, the department head get them for less than fifteen hundred, why are we going to have... Yeah, that kind of, like I said, it's been a while since I looked at these. Well, one's about purchase orders, but still, if you're going to purchase, purchase orders. Well, all right, let's go back, do we still want to leave it at fifteen hundred dollars?
No, I don't.
You don't?
I don't.
What do you want it at?
I think it's fine. Fifteen hundred's too much.
Well, I know why you did fifteen hundred, because some of the clamps and things that, you had to go up and get the water department.
But I'll, I can't say for the next person, but I'll answer that phone anytime of the day or night, I've done it before.
I think we need to have a backup plan, if they can't issue a sentence, then go with assistant administrator.
Yeah, okay, so...
Get approval on anything for five hundred.
Fifteen hundred dollars for this town right now is too much money to be spending without authorization.
Five hundred works for me.
All right, so if we're going to do, we just need to rework that whole thing.
That's all.
Because I don't want to do that.
Need to rework it.
Because that whole thing, that, that one section I just saw, about the five hundred dollars, actually says purchases of fifty dollars, but less than a thousand dollars. That doesn't even qualify, based on what the, what the thing reads. So we need to already work those three sections. Okay, that brings, that, we are done with that. All right, that brings us to number, item number six, discuss school on Latimer. Huh? That's up to y'all.
Trudy was the one that had most of the information on that.
I can tell you the information, because I got it before Trudy did, but I mean...
And it's up to y'all?
No.
If you don't have it in writing, there's nothing to discuss.
Then we will, do I have a motion to table it?
Motion to settle until we have a second.
I got a motion to second table, all right, table it then. All right, that brings us to number seven. Did you get? Uh, number seven is vote on Crystal Moore's termination. Councilman Taylor?
First of all, I'd like to apologize for being late tonight. I had to work late, had two, two emergencies come in, so I apologize to everybody for coming in late. Um, on September eighth, two thousand sixteen, the employment of Crystal Moore as police chief was terminated by myself, the town administrator, with approval of town council consistent with authority provided in ordinance two point zero eight point zero six zero. Subsequently, legal counsel for Chief Moore has challenged whether the town complied with its ordinances and state law in effecting the termination of Chief Moore. The town believes that its ordinances and state law were complied with on September eighth, two thousand sixteen. However, in order to bring finality to this matter, a motion is made to approve and confirm the termination of Crystal Moore as police chief.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, I call for a vote.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
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 All right. Last thing is adjournment, so do I have a, a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
So, all right, I got a motion to second, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay. Being adjourned.